Good evening. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on February 13, 2024, to the Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, Seventy Year Bayers, New Brunswick. We're all called, Ms. Vidalona.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Seawood? Mrs. Solis?
Here.
Mr. Spencer? Mrs. Varela?
Here.
Mr. Adorno?
Here.
Ms. Sevilla?
Here.
We have a call on.
Thank you. Turning it to item number two, flag salute. Reminder that our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, beginning at 7:00 p.m. here at New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. Moving to item number three, motion to open for a public hearing on budget.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Seawood? Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes. Uh, moving to item number four, presentation for public hearing on budget, 2024-2025. Mr. Drenia Vidalona.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Drenia Vidalona. I'm the school business administrator and board secretary for New Brunswick Public Schools, and it is my pleasure to present the proposed budget for the 2024-2025 school year. There are also handouts for the members of the public to follow along. Over the course of the next fifteen slides, we will review the preliminary budget totals, our revenues and appropriations, our budget increases and decreases, the tax impact, as well as our detailed advertised revenues and appropriations, and we will also review our educational priorities specific to staffing and capital improvement plans for the 2024-2025 school year. The preliminary budget for the 2024-2025 school year totals $297,703,784, reflecting an increase of approximately $11.9 million compared to the 2023-2024 budget. The primary factor driving this increase is a $12.8 million rise in state aid. In regards to the revenues that will support our 2024-2025 budget, they are made up of our awarded state aid for 2024-2025, which amounts to nearly $199 million; our early childhood preschool education aid carryover and transfer of special education students, which amounts to $25.5 million; our miscellaneous revenue, which amounts to $3.9 million; our semi-funding for the 2024-2025 school year, which amounts to approximately $600,000; local, state, and federal grant funding, which amounts to $9.1 million; and this is actually a decrease of about $7 million for the 2023-2024 budget that we'll go over in the next slide. Food service transfer funds is also included as part of our revenues, which amounts to $500,000; our budgeted fund balance, which amounts to $19.2 million; the tax levy for the 2024-2025 school year, which amounts to $37.1 million; and lastly, our withdrawal from capital reserve, which amounts to $2 million. So our revenue totals for the 2024-2025 school year reflect an increase of $11.9 million, which is a 4.17% increase over our 2023-2024 budget. So it is important to note that this budget does not include ESER funding previously received from the federal government to address the impact of COVID-19. So this is a part of the reason why our local, state, and federal funding line item is decreased by almost $7 million for the 2024-2025 school year. In regards to our budgeted appropriations for the 2024-2025 school year, the majority of our projected expenses will be allocated to staff salaries, which amounts to nearly $129 million; employee benefits, which amount to approximately $57 million; non-salary accounts, which amount to approximately $67 million; our early childhood pre-K budget, which amounts to $25.5 million; our local, state, and federal grants, and this is made up of mostly our title and IDEA funding sources, which amounts to $9.1 million; and our charter school tuition, which amounts to approximately $10.3 million. So this slide here provides a visual breakdown of our budgeted costs for the 2024-2025 school year. As you can see on the large blue slice of the pie chart, 65% of our budgeted cost is in our employee salaries and benefits, followed by our early childhood budget, out-of-district tuition, supplies, transportation, charter school tuition, and maintenance of schools plans. This slide highlights the projected increases or decreases in our budgeted costs in our 2024-2025 budget. Salaries for current staff and new positions will increase by approximately $5.2 million. Medical benefits will increase by approximately $9.5 million. Other benefits, including our purse contributions, social security, workers' comp insurance, et cetera, will be decreased by approximately $1 million. Gas, electric, sewer will increase by approximately $200,000. Transportation will increase by approximately $646,000. Charter school tuition will increase by approximately $2.3 million. Out-of-district tuition will increase by approximately $1 million. Supplies and professional services will increase by approximately $75,000. Other expense reductions will decrease by approximately $776,000. General administration will increase by approximately $460,000. Our early childhood budget will increase by approximately $1.9 million, and our maintenance of school plans will increase by approximately $2.3 million. In regards to the tax levy, the budget for the 2024-2025 school year proposes a $92 per year increase for New Brunswick residents. The tax levy is increasing by a total of $813,400, which amounts to a total tax levy for the 2024-2025 school year of $37,113,400, and that is an increase of $7.56 per month per household. I've also included this detailed breakdown of our advertised revenues and appropriations for the 2024-2025 school year, which are also provided in today's handout. The 2024-2025 budget will focus on the following educational priorities: maintaining current programs and supports; enhancing rigor and programming to optimize teaching and learning; improving instructional supports for students with diverse abilities and multilevel backgrounds; and implementing evidence-based teaching practices and interventions; staffing to support ability diverse and multilingual learners; professional development designed to promote innovation and expertise; providing professional learning for staff on culturally responsive teaching and effective instructional methods; and finally, the budget also allocates funds for finalizing the high school gym addition; developing cutting-edge science labs at New Brunswick High School and Pathways Middle School; installing LED signage across district schools; and implementing security upgrades to ensure the creation of the safest and most optimal learning environment. As I conclude, I would just like to provide a quick recap of everything that's been presented tonight. Once again, the preliminary budget for the 2024-2025 school year totals $297,703,784. With the 2024-2025 budget, we plan to maintain program offerings, extracurricular activities, as well as mental health and SEL supports for our students. In regards to staffing, the budget allocates funds for approximately four positions to support ability diverse and multilingual learners. And the following includes some of the following expense estimates that had a direct impact to our budget: a 4.2 increase in salaries; 4.2% increase, excuse me, in salaries; a 24.2% increase in medical benefits, which is mostly due to an increase in medical claims brought to us thus far; a 6% increase in transportation; a 6.4% increase in out-of-district tuition; a 29.1% increase in charter school aid; and a 2.24% increase in tax levy. And once again, we want to make sure that we note that the 2024-2025 budget no longer includes ESER funding aimed at addressing the impact of COVID-19. Therefore, we are working towards realigning staffing and programs previously supported by ESER funding to maintain programming. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
I'm gonna, we're gonna move to item number five, and we're gonna open up for public comments on just the 2024-2025 budget. Uh, do we have anyone, Ms. Vidalona? What's open?
For this portion of comments on the budget, there is no requirement to sign up ahead of time. So if any members of the public have a comment on the 2024-2025 budget, now is the time to share it with the board.
Hello, good evening. Good evening. My name is Linda Storey, of Heart Lord. And, um, thank you for that very clear, uh, presentation of the budget and written, written word is also very clear and...
Just hold on one second, Ms. Storey, because we can't hear you. I'm just gonna raise the microphone.
Okay. I think if I just get closer to it, maybe, is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
So I was thanking you for your excellent, very clear and presentation in written form and in your verbal presentation. I just had a couple of questions. Uh, the ESER funding is not included in the budget, but is there any ESER funding left? And it's just not included in the budget? Or it's not included because it's used up?
We are to use any available ESER funding that the district has at this time by June 30th, 2024. So even if there's unexpended ESER funding, we are not able to roll it over into the next school year. But we do have a plan already implemented to ensure that we utilize all of the ESER funding by June 30th, 2024.
Because my understanding is that it can be used to contract for services in coming school years. Correct.
We plan to utilize all of our ESER funding by June 30th, 2024.
Okay. If, so it will be used up and there won't be anything to, to get contracts for next year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And also when, um, the part where it said to maintain the, uh, mental health and SEL, does that mean at the current level? Is there any possibility of more counselors coming onboard? I'm unclear on the word "maintain." It says maintain the services, but is that maintained at the present level? Or could that be increased?
We are looking at that at this time. We're using the word "maintain" because a lot of our ESER funding was used for mental health supports, and as you know, we no longer are receiving that. So, uh, you know, we're in a, in a, in a, in a situation right now where we're trying to determine what we can continue to operate on. As stated in our presentation, our goal is to maintain current supports for mental health. Uh, we're gonna always take a look to see where we can improve upon. Cannot say for sure right now that we'll be able to expand, but at the minimum, there is definitely no decrease.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? I think that... So we're gonna move on to ra, uh, item number six for solutions A, B, um, A, and B, I'm sorry, on the 2024-2025 budget. Can I please have a motion?
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis?
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number seven, motion to close public hearing on budget.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis?
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And we're gonna move to a regular board meeting. Um, we have a performance by March on the Arts by the Paul Robinson Community School for the Arts. So I think we're gonna go down and have the kids perform.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to March on the Arts as Paul Robinson recognizes Arts in Our Schools Month. Today, the orchestra, band, and choir will perform a piece for us to celebrate all of the wonderful artistry in our district. The PRCA Orchestra Academy will be performing the piece "The Russian Music Box" by Sun He Nubold. The Russian music box is inspired by many aspects of Russian culture, including ballet, folk songs, and legendary tales. The PRCA Band Academy will perform an arrangement of the African-American spiritual "Wade in the Water" by Michael Sweeney. Listen as the band portrays a gospel style to this widely popular song of freedom that was sung by Harriet Tubman during the time of the Underground Railroad and first published by the Bix Jubilee song singers. And lastly, come away with the PRCA Youth Chorus as they perform "Pure Imagination" by Leslie Rikus and Anthony Newley, arranged by Jay Paulhaus. You can hear the original in PRCA's Spring Musical, "Willy Wonka Junior", which is set to be on June 6th and 7th, featuring the ropes and players of the Drama Department in collaboration with our PRCA's Youth Chorus. And remember, everyone, the imagination is where creativity and dreams are born. the imagination is where creativity and dreams are born.
Thank you, Madam President. The Facilities Committee meeting was held at the High School Gym Edition Construction Trailer. The gym edition remains unscheduled to be completed by early summer. Installation of the sidewalks and exterior finally grading has started. Gym equipment, including basketball hoops, backstops are currently being installed. The final coat of the interior paint is scheduled to be completed this week. The wood flooring and bleachers are scheduled for installation next month. We concluded the meeting with a tour of the new gym and athletic rooms. We also, we are closed, we have closed on the purchase of the Pathways Campus at 40 Van Dyne, which is owned, which will be owned by the Brunswick Public School District. The presentation of the content agenda resolution will reflect the approval of the school. We are now working with the New Jersey Construction Authority to upgrade building systems, starting with the replacement and upgrading of the HVAC equipment. That, Madam President, concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Can I please have a motion to set the Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Before I begin my report, I do want to just thank all of the School of Arts. I wish the students would stay a little longer just to hear, you know, congratulatory remarks and glad to see many of their parents here. But sometimes you need a little bit of that. And today for me is one of those days where, you know, you're just, you're working nonstop and you're putting the time in and investing and, you know, there's a lot of things that you're pushing and want to get done. And sometimes you just need to recognize that you need purpose. And they provided me purpose today. I mean, just from clapping from a presentation, just to see how organized and well put together they performed tonight makes me realize that this is exactly what I want to do in life. So when you're discouraged, you know, just come on and listen to the kids. And I'm sure our teachers feel the same way many days and administrators as well. But that's our purpose. You know, there's a saying that a school is only a building with four walls, but with promise inside. And we were able to see promise today. So again, I want to thank the parents. I want to thank our students. I want to thank the teachers that put many time, much time in today. It just gives me a lot of more purpose. And I think it's enough gas just to get me to Friday. In March, before I begin there, as of March, we enrolled 9,332 students. We had eight cases of harassment intimidation bullying, 177 suspensions. Our staff attendance was at 93%. Our student attendance was at 91%. Correction, our staff attendance was at 94% on average. We had 25 cases of positive COVID cases for employees and two cases of positive cases for students. In March, we have engaged in the celebration of Women's History Month. The history made by women is really important. It's history for everyone. While we live, while we in Brunswick Public Schools have been part in this profoundly important perspective to our students, I encourage our entire school community, including our parents, our families and our educators to also spend time considering how women have shaped our community, our country and our world. It's an awareness to be embraced and cherished. And perhaps the most essential lessons of women's history is that each of us have been profoundly influenced by the measured contributions women continue to make to the story of humankind. Also this month, our district embraced the Day of Understanding, organized by the Windows of Understanding Team. Multiple schools participated, shining a spotlight on student creativity, allowing us to delve into their thoughts, their ideas and meaning. We thank the staff who assisted and who are committed to addressing social justice issues around the concept of climate change, food equity, human rights and violence prevention. And it was just, it was great to just walk around and look at many of the artifacts that our students put together. And to look at them through empathy, to try as an adult, to try and understand how they see the world. And there's many stories in those pictures that you would have to take a lot of time to decipher. But our students are telling us a lot. And as leaders, as parents, as teachers, we need to take time and not assume and try and understand how they see the world and make the adjustments for them to be successful. Yesterday, March 25th, a ribbon cutting ceremony was held for the completion of the Solar Power Thrift Store, a collaborative project between P-Tech students and our industry partner, Jangoli. The thrift store is envisioned to serve as a resource hub, offering free clothing, workplace attire and hosting pop-up events for families within our community. We are looking to potentially move the thrift store container to 268 Baldwin Street by central office to complement our higher attire boutique at the Adult Learning Center. I want to extend in heartfelt appreciation to the P-Tech students, the faculty, principal and dummies, our committee teams and Jangoli for their unwavering dedication and efforts in bringing this endeavor to fruition. If you have not seen it, it's currently at the Pathway Campus parking lot. I mean, it's equipped with solar panels. It's a container. It's equipped with solar panels. You walk inside, you have AC, you have heat and AC that's driven by the solar panels. You see the battery packs. You see the electricity that's used to power. Our P-Tech students really use some engineering skills to create this container. But to know that they did it with a purpose to serve the community is heartfelt. In collaboration with the New Jersey Black Woman Physician Association in Brunswick Tomorrow, we held our March Vaccine Clinic on Saturday, March 16th from 10 o'clock to 1 PM at Red Shore School. In total, we administered 15 COVID vaccines and 12 flu vaccines. The next clinic is scheduled for Saturday, April 20th. Our upcoming New Brunswick Public Schools Job Fair is scheduled for Thursday, April 18th. For all district positions, please visit any of our district's social media platforms, Twitter, Facebook and our district website for more information. Next week, from March 29th to April 5th, our school district will be closed in observance of Good Friday, followed by spring recess. As we plan for some well-deserved family time and rest, let's also keep in mind that state assessments are approaching on April 29th. As we recharge, I ask parents to create a balance of relaxation and preparation with their children to ensure we are ready to demonstrate our learnings throughout the year thus far. Let's make the most both of the break and the learning opportunities ahead. On the day of return from spring recess, that Monday, we approached the highly anticipated solar eclipse on Monday, April 8th. Our schools are educating students about the eclipse's natural phenomenon. Furthermore, everyone, especially children, should be closely supervised and informed about the dangers of looking directly at the sun and the importance of using proper eye protection. Let's reinforce this message that safety comes first, even during exciting events like the solar eclipse. We urge our entire community to join in these efforts. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. Moving. Thank you so much. Can I please have a motion to set the Superintendent's report?
Dr. Caldwell, Mrs. Medina Hernandez, Mr. Ortiz, Mrs. Seawood, Mrs. Solis, Mr. Spencer, Ms. Varela, Mr. Adorno, Ms. Sevilla. Motion approved.
Ms. Chaylin Pettis won't be able to join us today. So we're going to move to item number 12, Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Edward Spencer.
Thank you, Madam President. The Facilities Committee meeting was held at the High School Gym Edition Construction Trailer. The gym edition remains on schedule to be completed by early summer. Installation of the sidewalks and the exterior finally grading has started. Gym equipment, including basketball hoops, backstops are currently being installed. The final coat of the interior paint is scheduled to be completed this week. The wood flooring and bleachers are scheduled for installation next month. We concluded the meeting with a tour of the new gym and athletic rooms. We also, we are closed, we have closed on the purchase of the Pathways Campus at 40 Van Dyne, which is owned, which will be owned by the Brunswick Public School District. The presentation of the content agenda resolution will reflect the approval of the school. We are now working with the New Jersey Construction Authority to upgrade building systems, starting with the replacement and upgrading of the HVAC equipment. That, Madam President, concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Mr. Spencer. Moving to item number 13, Athletic Committee Report by Ms. Patricia Varela, Chairperson.
Good evening, everyone. With the end of the winter season, we are looking forward to a successful spring season. In the winter, we had a total of 150 athletes complete the season, including 101 varsity award winners. Junior wrestling, Nyla Pollard, earned a bid to compete in the state wrestling tournament in Atlantic City in their second season wrestling after placing second in the Central New Jersey Regional Tournament. The spring season officially began last week with over 350 students registered at the high school level and over 180 at the middle school level. The sports for the season are baseball, softball, boys and girls track and field, boys and girls golf, boys tennis, boys volleyball, esports and for the second season ever, girls flag football. That concludes my reports for the season.
Thank you. Do we have a break or continuation?
Can I have a continuation for the final report?
Dr. Caldwell, Mrs. Medina Hernandez, Mr. Ortiz, Mrs. Seawood, Mrs. Solis, Mr. Spencer, Ms. Varela, Mr. Adorno, Ms. Sevilla. Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item 14, Curriculum Policy Committee Report. Ms. Emerald Seawood.
The Curriculum and Policy Committee met last week, March 19th. We wanted to highlight some of the events that the Curriculum and Instruction Committee has participated in since February.
Hello, good evening again. I have a question, again about the COVID funding. Could you please tell me what percentage of the COVID money that we got was spent on academic recovery?
We'll get you that. However, this portion of the public comments is on tonight's Board of Education. So that's a budget question, but we'll get you that information.
Okay, because I had asked about this during the budget portion, the money that is still remaining. Could I know if that will be spent on academic recovery? And did the district take a look at some of the things that other more successful districts did with the money when deciding how to spend the remainder of the money? We, sorry to say, did worse according to the Yale study out of any district in the state at academic recovery. And districts such as Camden that did much better. It would be interesting to know what they did differently. Has anybody taken a look at the other more successful districts?
We'll get you that information, Ms. Stork.
Okay. Is that something that's not known right now? Or I would appreciate it if it could be answered now. I am leaving time for that purpose.
What is your question, Ms. Stork?
The question is, did anybody take a look at what other more successful districts did with their COVID money that got better, the districts that got better results? We got the worst results in the state as far as rate of academic recovery.
Based on my knowledge, many of the other districts had extended school days, after-school programs. Many of them incorporated free food, lunch. Many of them actually created mental health supports and incorporated SCL. There was, you know, I think the question would be internally, in terms of the internal mechanisms of how things were done. So I couldn't really answer that. But in terms of, you know, providing accelerated learning opportunities for students, providing virtual tutoring, we use some of the same techniques as well here.
Okay, and going forward, the money that's being spent between now and the end of the year, the remaining money, will be used for academic recovery?
Whatever has been allotted for using COVID has already been allotted. So yes, right now, we are actually doing extended-day programs. We are providing supports for students. We are using our structures within the school day for accelerated learning. So that money is already, have been accounted for. There, I think what you may be referring to, a school district did not use the S M money, and they're trying to invest to spend it now. And they're coming up with other mechanisms to spend it for the remainder. If I'm inferring, that's what you may be referring to, but we used all the money that was allotted to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stork.
Next up, April Nicholas, who also signed up through the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It does not look like Ms. Nicholas is present this evening, so we'll move on to our third speaker, Ms. Brittany Oden.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Oden, thirty politics board of New Brunswick, New Jersey. I'm a parent of senior four techs, New Brunswick Health Science and Technology School here in New Brunswick, as well as a lifelong community member and an employee of New Brunswick Board of Education. As a parent, I stand here to speak publicly to share my concerns and situations that have transpired. It is to my belief that my daughter has been slighted and has not been given a fair opportunity to be a member of the National Honor Society. My daughter received from the past school counselor, Colin White, a courageous letter or email, and an application on October eighteen, twenty twenty-two, stating that she met G P A guidelines for the National Honor Society according to the New Brunswick Health Science and Technology High School twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three application. Unfortunately, last year, the application process fell into length and an deduction was never done. This year, she was never informed about her past application, nor given an app or new application to apply for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. At that time, I had not received clear information on the criteria, guidelines for the G P A, nor the selection process of how a student was chosen for the Health Science and Technology High School, National Honor Society chapter. As a result, I requested a copy of the district policy concerning the National Honor Society, as well as the N H F Guidebook from Miss Lago Tipp. She also advised me to speak and voice my concerns to the principal, because according to the National Honor Society guidebook, it states that if I need any questions answered, I address the issues and my concerns with an advisor. Unfortunately, there was no advisor at the time, so I requested to meet with Mr. Clifford to get some clarity. When I met with Mr. Clifford on February fifteenth to inquire about above information, I only received the Health Science Handbook after my daughter being a student there for four years. He stated that the district had three separate chapters of the National Honor Society, Health Science, P-Tech, and New Brunswick High School. He further stated that the Health Science did not follow the district policy forementioned. In my investigation, I find Mr. Clifford's statement was incorrect, because according to the National Honor Society website, there is only one record of one high school, which is New Brunswick High School. Please keep in mind all my verbal and electronic communications about this matter have been ongoing since September twenty twenty-two between myself, Mr. Clifford, and Colin White, who's no longer employed there. On the same day, after the unpleasant, unapologetic exchange with Mr. Clifford, I reached out to the office of the superintendent to request the meeting. After initially not receiving a reply from the office's superintendent, I emailed Ms. Villa Loa on February seventeenth to request to be placed on the agenda for February's Board of Education meeting. She replied and added me to the agenda. On Tuesday, February twentieth, I received a call. I don't have any more time. But my point is, I can continue? Thank you. I received a call from Arthur Potchinsky stating that she would like to set up a meeting with Dr. Johnson to speak with me about my concerns. She also stated that if I wasn't pleased with his results, I could come back to you guys and speak before you guys. My mom and I met with Dr. Johnson, and I had in hand all the National Honor Society and New Brunswick Public School information that I collected over time. He requested I send it to him. And after providing the information with Dr. Johnson, he said he would get back to me. A week later, I received a simultaneous call from Dr. Johnson's secretary and Ms. Perez, Director of Human Resources Office. I was speaking to Dr. Johnson when she called, and he said that he instructed Mr. Clifford to change the G P A requirements from unweighted to weighted and open up the application process again. I'm unsure why I was getting a phone call from the Human Resources Office, because it has nothing to do with the National Honor Society. But she called the main office and also my office while I was speaking to Dr. Johnson. After reevaluating Dr. Johnson's decision, I emailed him directly, informing him that I was not satisfied with the decision and taking further measures to resolve this situation. At this point, I was advised to submit my name to the executive board administrator to speak at the meeting or request an executive post session to inform members of all the aforementioned information I speak of. After speaking today, I am requesting that my daughter be granted the honors of the National Honor Society due to the blatant biased decision that was done against her. Please keep in mind some scholarship applications have gone in, and this honorable recognition has not been added to her academic resume and could possibly cause her ineligibility for monetary support. After expressing my disenchantment to Dr. Johnson concerning this decision, I emphasized the situation, did not emphasize the district vision, which is to prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners. The sentiments being shown to my daughter, who has gotten seven to fifteen colleges and colleges and universities, that regardless of how hard she works, she will continue to be ignored and overlooked. And in my opinion, Mr. Clifford and his colleagues involved in the decisions are being allowed to rewrite their homes at the expense and dignity of my daughter's achievements and her academic success. In addition, Mr. Clifford is not being fully held accountable to the district, nor to the New Brunswick Public School students, nor to the National Honor Society's conceivably biased behavior. This situation has been a display of egregious abuse of authority from Mr. Clifford, and unfair not to only my child, but other children who were robbed of this opportunity between the times of twenty nineteen and this year. And at this time, I have already filed a complaint with the National Honor Society, because Mr. Clifford's actions were not upright nor fair, and he should be held accountable for them. If you would like to see the information that I collected over time, I gave some of the information to Dr. Johnson. I have them linked me. But in all fairness, I hope that this problem can be resolved without a place to the to your needs. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stork.
Next, we have Ms. Ruth Laffler.
Good evening, members of the board. This is my fourth year as a parent in New Brunswick Public Schools. I have much appreciation for the quality of education and staff as I witness growth in my children. However, a very significant achievement gap continues to exist. To help close this gap, New Brunswick receives Title I funding, and every year, the provisions are communicated, and I am asked to sign the Parent School Compact for a total of four years now. It is communicated to me that the school commits to provide parents with opportunities to volunteer in their children's classroom and to be class parents. I am not here to criticize nor complain. I am here to ask for clarity and to raise awareness and to bring to the board's attention the significant barriers I have experienced as a parent to be permitted to volunteer. Every year for the last four years, I have asked about volunteering in my child's classroom. So briefly, twenty twenty was COVID. In twenty twenty-one, I was referred to the monthly PTO events, which I attended. Twenty twenty-two, my daughter's teachers seemed enthusiastic, and we discussed some possibilities. However, I was later told that it wouldn't happen and back to the PTO. In spite of the written affirmations, I felt unwelcome, and I also began to feel uneasy at the possible backlash to the teacher for entertaining the possibility. In twenty twenty-three, I sent emails to various people at the district to gain clarity around whether the district as a whole was not serious about family engagement or if virtual school was unique. I was asked to come in for a meeting with the principal as a result of these communications, which remains one of the worst experiences I've endured, and I do not say that lightly. I experienced her as hostile, condescending, and completely dismissive. The only good thing to come out of this meeting was that I became aware of and finally got access to the volunteer application package. As far as I can tell, the district does not differentiate between parents who wish to volunteer in their children's classrooms from any other type of volunteer, which makes it an outlier among surrounding districts. I pursued the steps to becoming a volunteer, and I thanked the board for approving me last month to begin volunteering. In spite of all this effort, the school said I was restricted to thirty minutes per month. After seeking clarity, HR informed me that these parameters were at the discretion of the principal. The VP later offered for me to come in weekly to assist kindergarten, lunch, and recess, which I had begun doing. Title I provisions stem from over five decades of research confirming that family engagement in their children's education improves academic outcomes, and that this engagement should be as whole partners, not peripheral and compliance-driven. If New Brunswick is serious about family engagement, there is much to be done to reduce barriers and extend welcome. My journey with R D U S required significant tenacity, felt like a fight, and resulted only in a concession and in what feels like an ongoing atmosphere of suspicion. In this scenario, it is the children who felt the most. I don't think family engagement is a magic bullet, but I do think it's a necessary component of a healthy school system. I am willing to volunteer additional time if there is interest in making this a reality. But please let me know if I'm just wasting my time and effort here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Do we have anybody else, Ms. Sevilla Loa?
Yes, Carlos Ramirez.
Good evening.
Good evening. Carlos Ramirez, reporter with New Brunswick today. I just want to start off by giving a shout-out to those who sign up and get the information to sign up within twenty-four hours of notice. I see that the district is very active on its Facebook page. Every day, they seem to post something motivational. I think there should be a publication letting parents know that if they intend, or the general public intends to speak at these Board of Education meetings that are open to everybody, that they need to sign up twenty-four hours in advance and what email or phone number they can reach out to. Just because, while many have access to social media, they do not know how to send out an email, but they do know how to call. And there should be languages provided, both Spanish and English, on those posts that are made. I know Facebook offers translation, but it's not always accurate. Now, I did want to also ask the board to make an announcement of the notifications that if anybody intends to speak at this meeting, who they can email to, or also provide some type of form at the front door of who that email and phone number is to contact to notify the board to speak at these meetings. Now, I wanted to get some clarification on who can attend student events such as concerts, graduations, sports activities, and other events that are given to students, that they can send out invitations to their parents and family members. I know many of these events are paid for, that you have to pay to answer such as sports. You provide some type of monetary ticket for it to enter. Other events are open to the public. Many kids have season concerts where they're given a flyer to give to their parents, and they can choose to come or not, and who they can bring with. Now, I want to see if these events are open to the public or only to family members of the students, or if they're open to the general public that they can also pay to come in and view all these sports activities. I know graduations, sometimes they're open to general public. Sometimes you do need a ticket that are offered due to space limitations. So I wanted to get some clarification on that. Second would be what security measures are in place when these events are happening in school grounds as well as off school grounds to ensure that anybody who's attending these events aren't that invited? And second, if there are any type of security measures such as metal detectors or bag checks to ensure that, you know, these younger kids and anybody who sends their kids to school are safe when other visitors come in, not only into school grounds, but also off school grounds such as Rutgers areas, I know you guys have done events there, and in general, access of the public, that sometimes it's not sealed up or gated off.
I'll respond briefly. Just based on some of the questions, I just wanted to say for the record that I do not want anyone to infer that our schools are not safe. That's number one. The only thing that we have to deal with a lot in our schools are just internal conflicts between students. I'm not at liberty to share our security procedures or processes, because that's what it is, it's confidential, and it's security. In terms of events, very rarely is there an event opened to the public. Majority of our events are school-based for the families and the parents and guardians who attend the school. The questions may seem as if we are demonstrating that the school district is not safe, and I just wanted to let everyone know this is one of the safest school districts that I know, based on occurrences. Again, we will be working internally with our- Again, we will be working internally with our students in terms of solving conflict, which is a challenge, but we are getting better. Well, I thank you.
I think if it's safe, that explains why ambulances are requested to a school very often, and many of these students end up being arrested. And I don't think there's any clarification, if you check IDs, to confirm these are legal family members, because I attended an event that I was kicked out for having a camera recording an event. Any homeless person could have entered, any stranger could have entered. There was no metal detectors, no bag checks, no nothing. Any random child could just come in and sit down and watch the event. So I'm pretty doubtful of your words when you say that our schools are safe. They are not, and we've all seen it.
Thank you, I disagree.
You too.
That concludes those that signed up to share comments during tonight's meeting.
Thank you so much, Ms. Villalona. Moving to item number 17, the president's report. I, I, I do want to reiterate that our schools are safe. I think that we have on New Brunswick, there is always that, those comments about that our schools and our kids are a certain way, and I think that's a very dangerous message, especially when people have a certain platform. So, however, I'm trying to turn it around. I do want to talk a little bit about a Day of Understanding, where we have P Tech, New Brunswick High School, Blanquita Valenti School, New Brunswick Middle School, Red Shaw, Livingston, Corvoston School, Lord Sterling, McKinley, and Woodrow Wilson, really creating a narrative about the way that not only are they understanding the world, but how they're using art as a language to really connect and change how they see the future and how they want to see the communities and the world that we see our young people living and that they're going to be adults and they're going to be the leaders of this community. So I just want to take a moment and really congratulate everyone that worked in the art in New Brunswick. I mean, you saw it tonight, but also in using the art as a way to grow into the emotional learning and really who they're going to be as people. I visited some of the schools, and I just left very hopeful about where we are and what the impact would be of our young people. So I also wanted to wish everyone a very restful. I know we have some teachers here tonight have a very restful spring break, a much burned break. And yeah, we'll see you guys when we guys come back. Wishing everyone a restful spring break. Moving to item number 18, the Consent Agenda, Resolutions A through A. Can I please have a motion?
Dr. Calvo? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Mr. Ortiz? Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Morella? Mr. Adorno? Ms. Sevilla? Motion approved.
Moving to item number 19, the Finance Committee Report. Mrs. Diana Solis?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee, along with all members of the Board of, New Brunswick Board of Education, had a chance to review the Finance Committee, and I'd like a motion to approve the report. That is as is.
Dr. Calvo? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Mr. Ortiz? Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis? Mr. Spencer? Noted. Ms. Morella? Mr. Adorno?
Yes, I've seen on page 23.
Noted. Ms. Sevilla?
Yes, I've seen on 29 and 30.
29 and?
30.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item number 20, Resolution for Closed Session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting at New Jersey S A 10-4-6 provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. One, personnel matters and matters, and two, matters of attorney or client privilege. Now therefore be resolved that the four said subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance to the, with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Can I please have a motion for closed session?
Dr. Calvo? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Mr. Ortiz? Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Morella? Mr. Adorno? Ms. Sevilla? We are in closed session.